but we do have some visitors that have signed in that are wishing to speak this evening. We've got three gentlemen from the fire department. I guess you have three minutes each.
You can stand there, sure. If you could just let us know your name.
My name is Jim Dorfler. I am the president of the Town of Amherst Presidents Council, also president of the Windsor Fire Department. And we want to thank you for allowing me and my colleagues to address you guys tonight. We're here to, I guess, educate what we're here for, and that is through area counties, they're trying to do recruitment and retention tools to help bring volunteers in. We are hurting countywide. And so we have some information to present to you guys, to you. It talks about the 10% assessment and taxes for schools to help bring the membership in and retain them. So these guys have more information than I have, but I just wanted to do myself to you and thank you again for letting us speak to you guys.
Thank you. My name's Robert Abrams. I'm president of the Snyder Fire Department, also a parent and resident here in Amherst, and my three kids go to Smallwood. So thanks for giving me a chance to address you guys tonight. As Jim kind of introduced, there's new legislation out there that allows for a 10% assessment reduction, calculating all the property taxes, special taxes, so on and so forth, for volunteer firemen. The reason why this is important is in the town of Amherst, you're served by 100% volunteer fire service. Many of us firemen are giving countless hours a year, upwards of over 300 hours in training, response times to calls, and this is all time away from our family and time that we selflessly are giving to the community. With an all-volunteer fire service, we need to be able to keep members coming in to keep it volunteer. And throughout the town of Amherst, the volunteer fire companies respond to over 30,000 incidences a year, plus all the training, the meetings, everything else that it takes for us to keep up with our skills and continue providing that service. It's been calculated that that amount of volunteer time that we're putting in saves the residents of the town of Amherst in upwards of $50 million compared to going to a paid fire service. The challenge is we're having trouble retaining and getting new members because volunteerism, as we knew it back in the day, 100 years ago when the Snyder Fire Department was formed, has changed. So we need to find ways to bring these members in to keep us as volunteers and continue to serve the community, thus hoping to keep the cost down for fire protection service. The reason why they've given us this tax relief, and this was started out at a state level with the state legislator and Governor Hokel, but it's really aimed to provide some financial relief for us firefighters and our property taxes to help us reimburse and offset some of the costs that we personally incur as firemen. I pay for my own fuel. I pay for wear and tear on my vehicle. There's some equipment I purchase myself, out of my own pocket, to be able to volunteer and serve the community. This is a step in the right direction to give us a little bit of a break on our property taxes to allow us and try to get new members, youth, to join our department, help them afford the housing in the town of Snyder, in Snyder, and the town of Amherst, which obviously, as you know, is fairly expensive. Young members that we need, that youth, are having trouble affording houses in the town of Amherst. And because there's residency requirements, and you want these firemen that live in your neighborhood that can respond to the neighbor's house, can respond to the school quickly when there's incidences, having this kind of tax relief is going to help make it affordable for us to continue to have volunteers in the Snyder area serving the community. Recruitment and retention is... Sorry, is that my timeline?
Yeah, but you can have the two minutes to your job. You're a friend and you're...
Okay, okay, I apologize. I'll keep it really short. Recruitment and retention is really key to keep us around. If we don't have those volunteers, it's going to be a tough time for us to provide service and the quick service that everyone here is used to. And then really, that's all I have to say. I'm going to turn it over to John Batino, who's going to pick up the next part of it and present the rest to you. So thank you.
Can I have the 20 seconds? He's... No, I'm just kidding. Good evening. My name's John Batino. I'm a lifelong resident of Egbertsville in Amherst, graduate of Windermere, and I'm currently a parent of two Windermere students. They're an awesome school, awesome faculty and staff, just phenomenal job for many, many years. And kudos to you as the school board and the district for supporting all of the efforts out in the community for the students. As Rob and Jim had mentioned, this is also about bringing new recruits to the volunteer fire service. Each department, I would say Egbertsville and Snyder, respond collectively to over 3,000 calls roughly per year with an all-volunteer staff. It doesn't affect meetings, details, fire prevention events at your schools, whether we're coming for an ice cream social or hopefully the bike rodeos and those things will all come back, and we'll start to be able to participate together. Where it really comes into play that I see is investing in the community of having volunteers that are within the community, and we start to develop that nurturing of residents within our community that stay here for a while. In Egbertsville, we have firefighters that'll stay for a five-, six-year period, whether they're in college or they start their starter house, and then they'll move to another area. Where I look at it is we'd like to keep them retained, the retention side, once we get them in. And if they're looking at the difference between a $50 a month payment for their house if they live on Main Street in Springville, or if they're going across the street to Chickewauga or to a neighboring county or to the city, it may be an incentive to keep them in the town, actively investing within the school as parents, as stakeholders in the community, and start to develop that unified community presence that we have. Additionally, the tax credit incentive is based upon the firefighter's primary home, their place of residence. So if they're running a business or something, there's nothing that they can take advantage of. It does not change the tax levy for the school district at all, and it does not change the availability of budget funds for the school district whatsoever. It's simply an assessed value credit to each firefighter's home assessment. We have some paperwork and some things, resource documents, I believe I sent them out as well for digital use, including yesterday's news coverage that they had from the Firemen's Association of the State of New York on the billions of dollars that are saved statewide by a 90% roughly volunteer force in New York State. And the figure of $50 million that we gave, 50, throughout the town of Amherst, just perspective, that was for a combination department, just with paid drivers and semi-paid staff. A full career department is based upon the town of North Greece, which is similar to the town of Amherst. They always relate resources together. But it's basically a combination department. It would be substantially more than that if we had to have a career staff in place. We're really trying to put the pin into this so we can refulfill the volunteer commitment in the volunteer fire service in the town of Amherst. Thank you. Just for... I'm sorry, for the process, process of the law resolution, if the school district goes in that direction, and we followed this with the other municipalities we've met with... Excuse me, my mouth is really dry. Would be to have the public hearing, set the date for the resolution, and put the resolution in place. It was fairly simple and straightforward, and then the town manages the backend of it as far as the assessment and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other visitors signed in wishing to speak. Do we have any reported boards or committees that met recently? Well, it's an easy one tonight. So that will bring us then to the superintendent's report.
Thanks. I'm pleased to welcome Mrs. Flanagan and Mrs. Stager from Windermere to provide you with an update on all the wonderful things happening at Windermere. Welcome.
Okay. Good evening. Hello. Again, Julie Flanagan, the principal, and joining me is Amy Stager, our assistant principal. And we're here to present to you the wonderful things happening at our incredible school. Tonight's agenda, we're going to focus on teaching and learning, student life, and Amherst pride. Thank you, Mr. Longstaff. Sixteen-year-old...
It was your dad.
Shut it down. Shut it down. We're going to focus on teaching and learning and student life and Amherst pride, which are the three main pillar areas aligned. We always, what we do at Windermere, we always align with the overarching umbrella set forth by the district, and that's our strategic action plan. So we're going to start with teaching and learning. Persuasive writing. Persuasive writing is one of the key components of writing instruction, and it is a main area within the New York State standards. Whenever we have an opportunity to find an authentic learning experience that involves getting kids to write tied with something that they love, we're going to buy into that. A group of third-grade teachers got together and had this incredible idea of creating a service learning project partnered with the SPCA. With this project, the students, all the students at grade three, learn not only the components of how to write a persuasive essay, however, at that grade level it would be a paragraph, but also they're researching and learning about animals, how to care for them, and then ultimately persuading the audience to adopt them out of the shelter into a family. The PTA has partnered with us. What they do is they bring folks in, show them about the animals, how to care for the animals, and then culminating activities, the third graders go to the SPCA. You can see one of the students reading one of their stories in books to one of the animals and doing also public service announcements. They've created a video through the use of technology, which involves speaking, listening, and writing. Here's a little snippet of one of the PSAs that they put together on why we all need to adopt one of those friendly animals at the shelter. That's all. Yeah, we're good. So that's just a snippet of it. But this project tied with that service learning, the kids really learned about how their words and their voice can make a difference. So they were so inspired in the classes through a two-week coin drive, collected $418 that they donated to the SPCA.
All right. So as you know, at Windermere, one of our greatest strengths is our diversity. And every year around February, we are always reflecting on how we celebrate Black History Month. And we're always trying to make it bigger and better to ensure that every single child at Windermere is learning about Black history and is learning about the amazing Black Americans and their impact that they've had on our American history. Oh, excuse me, American history. So this year, Mrs. Flanagan and I raised the expectation to our classroom, or our grade-level leaders and liaisons in each grade level had to pick what their anchor unit or their anchor topic was going to be on how they address Black History Month. So we wanted to share with you some of the projects that they came up with. So our second-grade team decided to focus on scientists. So they researched Black scientists and focused on it for the month of February, and then created a beautiful bulletin board so everybody in the whole school community could also learn from it. Our first-grade teachers embedded amazing Black Americans into their morning meeting greeting. So as a responsive classroom school, we have a greeting as part of our morning meeting. So every single day, they learned about a new human who made an incredible impact on American history, and then were able to interact with that. And now that is lining our first-grade hallways. And then finally, just to highlight, our third-grade teachers really wanted to focus on literature and high-quality picture books. So they used those throughout the month for students to really have discourse and dialogue around these really important topics. And then the students were also able to do little projects on each book, and those, again, line our hallway. So when you came into Windermere in the month of February, we really wanted you to feel how important Black History Month is to our building and feel it throughout the halls, through talking to students, that it was really alive and well in our school during that month.
We're fortunate enough to receive additional funding through the Title I grant, and we're always looking for ways to utilize those funds to support teaching and learning. Part of that funding, we were able to purchase hardcover books for all of our intermediate classrooms, their multicultural book packs, and their research base on some of the top literature selections. Ah, Penpal. This is a new, neat little tool we have that we wanted to show you. You might be thinking, this little gadget here is what's called a Penpal pen. And we were fortunate enough to purchase 2025 of these. What this pen does, it is interactive, multisensory, multilingual, and it is paired with a book that through the touch of this pen, as you scan over the words, it will read out to you any language and translate that text. So this pen is equipped to translate it into like 100 different languages. So these books are paired with this, and then students can see the book. Not only you can see a little snippet of it, but it's the text in Urdu is the language, and then underneath it is English. So for our E&amp;L students, this is an incredible experience if they're matching the word to their other language and then hearing it through this pen. So we have these Penpal sets also available. They're in our, for classroom use, and they're also hanging in our library so students can actually take those out. So it's not just for our E&amp;L students, it's for all the students at Windermere. Again, they get to experience the many diverse languages that we have existing in our schools by many of our students.
Okay, now we're going to move on to student life. I'm very excited to talk about this new initiative at Windermere that kind of kicked off this school year. So this idea really sprouted from Mrs. Flanagan and I talking last summer about three needs that we have and three desires we have for the building this year. One of them being to continue to align and strengthen our character education program and really centralize it as a building. The second one being to strengthen our school community. We know as a responsive classroom school, that sense of belonging and feeling part of the school is really critically important. And then finally, to have a forum for our pre-K through fifth-grade students that Mrs. Flanagan and I can talk to once a month. So this sounds like a club, an after-school club. It's not. What it is, is a high-energy, school-wide assembly. So we have one Cub Club or assembly per month. We have one for our pre-K through second graders, and then one for our grades three through five in the afternoon. And it has been such an incredible addition to our school community. The kids absolutely love it. I think every day someone says, "Hey, is there Cub Club this week? Are we going to Cub Club?" So the students really feel like they're part of this, and then it is like they have membership to a really important club in our school. So we did put together a video. It's about five minutes in length, but we wanted to kind of walk you through what the experience is like. So it kind of takes you from start to end of what our Cub Club typically, the routine that it follows. We know that kids do really well with routines and expectations. So the committee that we formed last August came up with the exact, you know, agenda that every Cub Club would follow. So the kids are like experts at it now. They know what songs we sing, they know when we sing them, they've practiced them in class. And then also infused in this video is some testimonials from our kids, but then also from some of our committee members and what they have to say about the impact that this has had on our school. They get really excited.
All right, boys and girls, welcome to Cub Club!
So one of the great things about Cub Club is that it allows us to celebrate the character traits that are so important in our building, and that's one of the key components of why we do Cub Club. One of the great things about it too is that the students get to celebrate each other by showing, you know, which of our kiddos has shown that character trait for that month. And it's so much fun. Kids come in smiling, we laugh, we dance, and have a great time, and it's just one of the highlights of our month. At every Cub Club, we introduce the new character trait for the coming month. This Tier One strategy allows Leslie and I an opportunity to utilize common language to define the character traits and provide exemplary examples of the trait in action. Our teachers do an incredible job reinforcing the trait throughout the month in their classroom, making the traits part of the fabric of our Windermere culture. Courage. Little stand right now. Who told you what is courage? Courage isn't something scary. Standing up for a noble fighter, doing something hard even if you're a kid. I'm afraid to be on stage in front of all of you, but I'm showing courage. My friend Julia helps me. Do you know anything else about courage or maybe is there something that your class wanted to share with us? I need my classmate a video about courage. You must be... That's why. Hey, loser!
It was critically important to the planning committee that this experience really felt like a club with a common purpose or interest devoted to reinforcing a sense of belonging and strong community at WBS. Students thus have a role to play in each Cub Club meeting. They wear a membership bracelet that gets checked by relevant faculty staff upon entering the meeting, allowing each student to feel that they are a member and that this is their club. Teachers are excited to sign their class up to teach and introduce the new character trait alongside my friend Melissa Stazio and I. The Cub Club friends does not only bring the WBS community together, it creates and sustains a safe, a nurturing, and an engaging learning and school environment for all children. Three!
One of my favorite parts about Cub Club is when we welcome new people into our school.
Well, my favorite part about Cub Club is when we get our bracelets because it makes people feel a part of our school.
My favorite part of Cub Club is when we...
My favorite part of Cub Club is the Windermere Shout Song. Cub Club makes you want to shout!
My favorite thing is when we call winners.
It's hearing the winners.
My favorite part of Cub Club is when we announce the award winners and cheer them on.
My favorite part about Cub Club is when we welcome new students to our school.
My favorite part of Cub Club is when I get to sing when we're on stage.
All right. So hopefully that gave you a glimpse. It didn't highlight every single aspect of it, but you can see that we welcome new students to our school every month. There's somebody new in Cub Club, and we sing to them. We have the Windermere Shout Song, which energizes them. They learn so much about the new character trait, they celebrate their classmates, and show empathy towards others, and it's really just been an incredible experience that I think just guys the limit in how we can continue to tweak this and improve the fun of different aspects. So we're really happy with how it's worked out.
Mrs. Stager and I always say, "What's our favorite day?" It's Cub Club. It's Cub Club Day. So we look forward to that.
Like the third Thursday of every month.
The next part of our student life really cannot hold a candle to Cub Club, but is something new that we added this year. Many of you have seen a lot of this March madness, book madness circling around through many areas of schools. Our sister school down the street has been doing this for a while, and that sort of tipped us off to a great idea that we wanted to get on board with as well. One of the things that this does is it not only homes in that March madness and basketball, but what we've done is we've created our own brackets by using popular student books. And the kids, something so simple as this, the kids just love it. So what they do each week is they get two books. They get to read those. The whole school reads the same two books, and if they don't have access to the book, they can see the YouTube link where it's actually read aloud to them, so they follow along, and then they vote on the book. So it's just for pure fun and enjoyment, and it has enabled us to showcase books and have students read other books that they not normally would select. And because it's a competition, they're all being exposed, and they're all going to be reading these books, which we have selected through the lens of diversity, equity, inclusion, and multiculturalism to, for them to have that exposure. And then, at the end of the week, we have, this is an example, we have two students coming on our morning announcements announcing the winner. Our brackets fill up, fill up, and currently we're down to the final four. We'll keep you posted.
Well, we also want to highlight tonight that our after-school activities are like up and running, full-fledged, which we're really excited about post-COVID, that we can get these back in our schools after school. So it's incredible, the opportunities that our students have to stay after and engage in many different activities. Obviously, our musical theater club, we don't have our performance next week. We have lots of different sports clubs. We started chess club this year, which was super popular. And one that we wanted to highlight was our tennis club. This was brand-new this year, and we were able to do it through a grant from the United States Tennis Association, partnering with the Village Glen Tennis Club. So we were able to offer after-school tennis lessons with professional tennis pros. In our gymnasium, it filled up, there was a waitlist, we're definitely going to need to do this again. But the culminating event for tennis club was actually they got to play tennis at Village Glen. So they got to go and play on a real tennis court and have pizza and start to kind of develop a love for a lifelong sport. So that was awesome, that was new, and something we hope to bring back. And then in typical Windermere fashion, we always have that laser-like focus on instruction. So yes, many of our after-school opportunities are fun, but we also have academic opportunities as well. So we have a math club running, we have a Wendy's Rock and Readers, which makes reading and writing fun and more engaging for kids, and then we offer a STEAM club. And then, of course, our social, emotional wellbeing of our students is incredibly important. And this UB mentors club we've had in the past, but it's been absent for a couple of years for a variety of reasons, COVID probably being the greatest one, but it is back under the facilitation of Melissa Stazio, our school counselor. And what this does is the Windermere students at Windermere, who would benefit from a really positive role model, with a University of Buffalo medical student. So the med students come to Windermere once a week and partner up with one of our Windermere students, and it's just an incredible opportunity for them to get access to a role model who can kind of mentor them and work through a lot of different situations. So that's been a really popular program, and those students are recommended by classroom teachers and then by Melissa as well, the students that she might work with.
The last part of our student life that's contributed is, this is just a new addition to our hallway. We really wanted to publicly thank our PTA for this incredible gift. Here's a little bit about our new book vending machine, which is a big hit.
The book vending machine has been a wonderful addition to our school. It has really complemented our love of learning and the gift and joy of reading a brand-new book. The kids love coming down to pick up their book of their choice on their birthday. They take it home, and then it adds to their book collection at home. We are so fortunate to have this book vending machine in our school, and it would not have been possible without the generous donation from our PTA. The PTA has always provided a pencil or a birthday book for the students on their birthday, and we just thought this was a fun way to elevate that and provide, you know, more fun additions to the school and make it a little more fun for the students for their birthdays. So how it works, when it's their birthday, the students come to the office, they get a gold token, they put it in the machine, and out comes a book of their choice. It's brought so much joy to our kids. They absolutely love coming down to use the book vending machine. Okay, now we'll transition into our last section of Amherst pride. So first, we want to highlight our first, probably annual event of our Veterans Day Parade. This came to us from our first-grade teaching team. They were teaching a social studies unit on citizenship, and most specifically about the Veterans Day holiday, and they came to us asking if we could host a school-wide Veterans Day Parade. So this ended up being an amazing event. We had approximately 25 veterans from the community come in to Amherst to do the parade route, and they were able to walk with their Windermere student that they were related to. Our halls, as you can see, were completely lined with Windermere students wearing patriotic colors, holding American flags, a lot of them had hats and signs just to show our appreciation for these veterans. And then our parade was led by Mr. McCartney, who is one of our kindergarten teachers. He's a veteran himself. And then, with our school mascot, wearing such a lovely costume, that was actually hand-sewn by Edie Weaver, one of our teaching assistants. So really, this was just such a wonderful school-community event and taught our students so much about the importance of Veterans Day, so much that we'll probably do it every year.
New tradition, for sure. Our last two slides are about our wonderful partnership. The first one with the Rotary Club of Amherst South. Again, they've been continuing to support Windermere in so many ways. They were able to donate and make for us a free little library. So, now our incredible courtyard has a free little library in that courtyard where students provides easy access for books to kids when they're in the library, when they're in the courtyard, which has really become like an extension of our library. We've been given now a sale shade area so the kids can come out there and borrow a book and put it back in their new free little library. And lastly, we want to end with our buddy bench. This is something that I just love, this gift of this buddy bench. Again, I want to recognize the board that this buddy bench has been donated by Gail Daniels, who really is considered just like a guardian angel of Windermere. She's donated a lot through her foundation of Stephen's Spirit of Giving, which was a former Windermere graduate that passed away. Upon his death, at the age of 35, they started this Spirit of Giving fund in his honor. And she always recognizes Windermere, as he would say it was one of his favorite school experiences, was to go through Windermere and play in the music program. With that, she's always calling and saying, "Mrs. Flannigan, what do you need? What can I contribute? We'd like to donate." A buddy bench is just what that is. It's a bench that if you are new to Windermere and you need someone to play with and you're looking for a friend to go on the playground with, you would sit on that bench. And the students now have been told and instructed that when they see someone on the buddy bench, that they need a buddy. Go over and say, "Come on, you can play with me." This is an actual experience that a first-grade teacher sort of witnessed and pulled out her camera to show there was a student on the bench. Another student came over and said, "Come on, you can be a buddy." So, what this does is it has given students strategies so they don't feel alone. They can be included. We have a friend. And it just helps promote that friendship and, again, the inclusion within our school and out in the playground. And that concludes our presentation on Windermere. Thank you so much for your contribution. Do you have any questions?
Very good job. Thank you so much for highlighting all the wonderful things going on at Windermere this year and highlighting some new traditions that we look forward to. Great job.
Thank you.
So, we're going to transition to a presentation about our budget. And while Mrs. Vazinsky is pulling up for presentation, I'll just mention that, you know, we are close to a final draft of our 23-24 budget. We're working with information that came from the executive budget proposal. And you may have heard that the one-house budgets were released by the Assembly and the Senate, not last week, and there seems to be unanimous alignment from the three branches of state government on the full funding of foundation aid, which is great. There's a few other topics that they are working on and negotiating. So, I hope they have an on-time budget by April 1st. But it doesn't appear as though, like we've seen in the past, that funding for public schools in the state is one of the hotly debated topics. So, we're working with the aid runs that we've received from the governor's office, from the executive budget. We'll continue to monitor budget development from the state. And our plan would be to present to you an update, hopefully very brief, on April 11th, and then have you adopt the budget that will go before the voters on April 18th. So, this is, I don't want to say a final draft, but it is pretty darn close as far as the information we have at this point.
Thank you. In our last budget presentation, we focused a lot of time on our revenues. So, tonight, we're going to focus a lot of time on our expenditure because our revenue projections haven't changed significantly. So, everything that's in blue is an adjustment from our last presentation, so I'll focus on those items. So, in our revenues, we did have a change in our tax cap calculation. We received some updated numbers from BOSI's, which affected our capital exclusion. So, the tax cap calculation that we submitted to the State Controller's Office at the end of February reflected a 2.02% increase, which is tax cap compliant. That left us with $881,000 of a capital exclusion, which was a minor change. We didn't have any major changes to any of the other revenue categories. This is the state aid slide that we shared last time. There are no changes to this as well. These are the January state aid runs that Superintendent Pennell mentioned, which reflect a $5 million increase in state aid coming into next year for a total of $27.4 million. So, overall, we have the change to the tax cap of 2.02%. There were some minor other revenue changes that we made, and that was just for rounding purposes, which give us an overall revenue budget of $75.5 million, or a 10.6% increase. Okay, so, let's talk about some of the items that we have proposed increases, or that we have proposed as increases to our budget for next year, which are additions to not only staffing, but also materials and supplies and contract services. So, we kind of have it broken down by building and department for you. In the high school, one of the increases is 2.0 FTE teachers, which will be an ELA teacher, which actually supports the ENL population that's in the high school right now, and a social studies teacher. In the middle school, we are including the assistant principal that was in the stimulus fund last year or this current year. We're including that as an add to next year's budget, as well as three teachers, two for AIS, one in ELA and one in math, and one in grade six ICT, which is one of our special education teachers. And then, across both buildings, the high school and the middle school, we have some sixth assignments for our teachers. And those are current teachers that have an additional class or responsibility, which helps us either handle a one-off class that might need coverage, possibly an added elective, or an added class section to keep class sizes low based on our enrollment. We've also added home instruction slots at BOSI's for both of our buildings, as well as increases to the extracurricular budgets and field trips. So, that's an addition for this year. Previously, we hadn't been funding field trips. So, we added a little bit of money in each building so that, you know, they can accommodate some of those requests.
Look through the items marked with an asterisk.
Thank you. The asterisks are items that we currently have in place, but they were funded through our stimulus grant. So, we're either maintaining them. When we thought originally we would be rolling them for a couple of years, we're going to keep them. Or all along, it was the plan to keep them, and now we're rolling them into general. And those are marked on each of the department pages. In the elementary buildings, we are adding a general education teacher at Smallwood. And in Windermere, we're adding two AIS teachers, one in math and one in reading. The added reading teacher also allows us to reduce two part-time teaching assistant positions, but both positions are vacant currently, so no one will be losing their job because of that reduction. Also, we'll be in both buildings maintaining the building aid that was added through stimulus. And we have increases to not only the materials and supplies for general classrooms, but also for science. So, there are some changes to the science classrooms in grades three through eight, so there are some additional science lab materials that are needed. So, this increase in budget will allow each of the buildings, both elementary schools and the middle school, to be able to purchase the supplies. And then, as in the middle school and high school, a field trip budget. In athletics and physical education, we are adding two teaching assistants, one in Windermere and one in the middle school. And those are two buildings that have a pool. So, this will help us ensure that we have adequate coverage, not only in locker rooms, but in the pool because you always have to have an extra person for eyes on deck, which will allow us to continue our physical education unit of swimming in both buildings. We're adding six coaching positions in the high school and middle school, two for football, two for soccer, a strength and conditioning position, which will be split over two seasons, which is in addition to the one that we added in the current year budget. And then, an additional unified basketball coach. So, our program has grown, and one coach is no longer enough, which is a wonderful thing. Huddle All-In. We currently have Huddle, which is a software that athletics uses. We're increasing our subscription with Huddle, which will allow our coaches to have increased capabilities for filming and watching stats, game breakdown, so they're very excited about having that. This is also a live stream, so there will be cameras on the turf and in the gym so that we can stream events and then also have recorded events available for people who weren't able to attend events. And then, an increase to contract services, materials and supplies. These are just general increases to the athletic budget to maintain the programs that are already in place. In special education, we're adding a budget for two ICT teachers or special education teachers. Those are not straight hires currently, but we're watching our numbers for next year. And in the event that, you know, we have more students identified or find that in one of the buildings there's a need, you know, we'll have the ability to hire that and fill that need without negatively affecting our budget. We currently have a .5 stage teacher, and based on the needs of our students, we're going to increase that position to full-time. And then, also an increase for home instruction, contract services, and out-of-district placements. So, we do have a lot of students who just don't find success in our general education settings or in our buildings, so they just require additional services that, you know, we contract out for. So, this budget will allow them to have the services that they need to find success if they want. Curriculum instruction technology. We have proposed to add a director of curriculum instruction, which will be in Dr. Shanahan's office, which will help support a lot of the initiatives and PDE that the district is moving forward with. We have some stipends for teacher coordinators and a curriculum leader. So, as those programs are growing, these stipends allow vertical alignment and continuity across different buildings and different grade levels. And we're looking to increase software, contract services, materials and supplies. Again, those are programs that we're already running, but as costs go up, the budgets need to be increased a little bit. And then, there's additional funds for professional development, not only to continue our strategic plan work, but also to continue the DEI work that the district is embarking. Staff and student services are our HR office. We are maintaining the additional nurse that we have on staff. Previously, we had one in each building, and this current year, we maintained a fifth nurse. And we used that nurse to help cover some of our absences in other buildings, where before, if we needed a substitute, we had to contract out. So, now we have the coverage built right at house. It's one of our own staff, and they're familiar with all of our buildings, so it was a great resource this year. Our records management clerk will be in addition. This current year, we received $75,000 grant to start digitizing our records. And that grant included a part-time management clerk. We know that that's not nearly enough time, and if we really want to digitize our records, that's going to be a long-term project. So, adding this position will allow us to move down that path. And then, again, general increases for contract services as our offices are looking to at different platforms and different contractual obligations just to help us be more effective and more efficient. In facilities, we are adding a laborer in the high school, so that is a full-time position. It's our largest building and our most active building in the district, so they could use a little bit of extra support. General increases to materials and supplies. We want to make sure that the facilities budget is sufficient to meet the needs of the district so that we're maintaining everything. We just finished a capital project, and we want to make sure that all of the wonderful things that were added in that project are maintained as we move forward. And then, the furniture replacement budget. So, previously, we haven't had a furniture replacement budget, so we were using donations or trying to find money within the budget to replace furniture as needed. This will allow us to plan for that and have a long-range plan for replacement so that we can keep things up to date and in good shape. And then, in the business area, we currently have a contingency line of $1 million. It's funded with fund balance. We have that in our budget every year to help us plan for unplanned expenditures. And we are proposing to double that line to $2 million, which will allow us to help push money into our capital project, our new capital project. So, voted on in December, we promised the voters $3.2 million of district funds to help offset the local share and keep that cost low. So, this is our first step to getting that money into the capital project. We have four or five years to do it, so this is just step one. Also, in the January state aid runs, there was about $482,000 that was earmarked a set-aside that was proposed for high-impact tutoring and different purposes. We don't know yet if that is going to be enacted in the final budget, but if it is, we need to carve that $482,000 out of our foundation aid increase. So, in order to plan, not knowing whether or not that set-aside was going to come to fruition, we will take it out of that contingency line if it does come to fruition. As Superintendent Pennell, we did receive the one-house budgets. Neither supported the set-aside, but we won't know until the budget's adopted whether or not that's actually enacted. So, all of these adds, what does that look like across the different categories of our expenditures? In personnel, we'll have a $2.6 million increase, or about 8.2%. With that, we have to look at our benefits or ERS, TRS, like a net. So, our ERS rate is 13.1, which is an increase over the current year. So, that'll be an increase of about $157,000. TRS, the projected rate is decreasing, which is great, but because our salaries are going up a little bit, it's about a $61,000 increase in spending. Like a net is $215,000 increase, and that rate is expected to stay the same at 7.65%. We do have a significant increase in our health insurance, about $1.2 million, but about $750,000 of that is rebates that previously we brought in as a net against our expenditures. Now, we have them counted on the revenue side and the expenditure side. So, overall, we're expecting to see about a 3.9% increase in premiums for our employees. And then, our workers' compensation premiums are doing very well. Our rates and our premiums are consistent from year to year, and we have a modest increase of $3,000 in that line. In general support, we have about $377,000. And these are some of the contract services and materials and supplies we talked about that are not directly related to instruction. Buildings and grounds, legal fees, liability insurance. Copy paper was a big one this year. We spent a lot more on copy paper than we anticipated, as well as the $100,000 furniture line that we talked about a few minutes ago. And instructions, these are the expenses that are directly related to our buildings and our programs. 24.2% or about $1.14 million. The majority of that is tied to our special education tuition for our out-of-district placements at about $900,000, with some other minor increases in the field trip money and materials and supplies, charter tuition, and softwares. BOSI's is only increasing about $108,000, which is 2.2%. So, we do have placements for BOSI's students there as well, and then some general increases across different lines. And this also maintains our technology replacement cycle. So, in the last few years, we've seen some larger increases in their BOSI's line as we were working into those different projects. Now that we've had three years of increases, we can keep that steady. We won't see the increases continually, but we can still maintain the purchasing that we need to keep our technology up to date for all of our students and our staff. Transportation has an increase of about 9.2%, or about $338,000. This is the second year of our two-year contract extension. It is tied to CPI. We have added a boss at Windermere, so we'll need to look and see if that needs to continue or if we can phase that out. or if we can phase that out. That was added during COVID with stimulus funds. And we also added money in this line for the field trip expenses that we talked about. And then, our debt service is staying the same, has a $6,000 increase. So overall, we have a expenditure budget of $75.5 million. Again, it's 1.6% increase, which matches our revenues. It's a $7.2 million increase in spending. And then, in the future years, you can see things return a little bit more to what we would expect with more modest increases at about 2%. So overall, we have a balanced budget of $75.5 million with the revenue and expenditure side equally. And then, in future years, in the next year, we're looking good as well. Future years assume that we have only a 3% increase in foundation aid and that all other state aid remains flat. So we're fully phased in this year. This year, they're giving any district that was already phased in a 3% increase, so that's what we use for projections moving forward. And our budgets look pretty good moving forward. So in summary, $7.2 million increase in revenues, 10.6%. The majority of this comes from state aid, which is about $5 million. We also have increases due to Erie County sales tax, interest earnings, and our kept-compliant tax levy of 2.2%. On the expenditure side, equal increase of $7.2 million. And the majority of that increase is personnel benefits, $4.3 million. Another 1.1 in instruction, again, that was mostly related to special ed, out-of-district placements. And then, smaller increases for GOCEs and transportation. And then, the $1 million increase to our contingency line, which will help fund our capital project moving forward. We have a balanced budget using the same amount of fund balance reserves that we have in the current year. A million dollars in fund balance and $80,000 in reserve. Our goal is always to not use that, but that's what we use to fund our contingency line, so it's not negatively affecting our taxpayers. And with a balanced budget, our next step now is to monitor the April state aid runs that come out and see if there are any major changes that we need to address. If not, we'll have another budget update on April 11th, but there may or may not be anything to update you on. And as Superintendent Pennella mentioned, our proposed adoption date is equivalent to. So if you have any questions?
Thank you. That's all we have for the superintendent's report.
With the finishing of the superintendent's report, we'll need a motion for new business.
I need a motion to approve new business items, E1, A to E, E2, B through E, E3, B, D, E, G, and H.
So if we can approve a motion for new business items, E1, A to E, E2, B through E, E3, B, D, E, G, and H. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, do we have any action items?
No.
No follow-up action items, then we'll need a motion to convene to executive session.
I need a motion to convene to executive session regarding a performance of a particular person in contract negotiations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Thank you.